Okay, we got about six seconds here. Okay, we'll begin this special meeting, Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, on Wednesday, May 23 at 2:00 PM sharp. Meeting is now called to order. Please silence your phones and we will stand now for the invocation and pledge. Father in heaven, thank you very much for your attendance here. We need it today. We always need wisdom and guidance in every decision we make. Today is no exception, so please guide us, we pray. Jesus name them in.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody? Roll call, please.
Director Mark Solik.
Here.
Director Ann Rice.
Here.
President Dan Nuttler.
Here.
Director Bill Kelleher.
Present.
Division 5, Director Jacobson, following a letter of resignation from Director Jacobson, submitted to the District Secretary on May 17.
What'd you just say?
She's so soft spoken.
I just said for the record.
She's just saying for the record that this division is vacant because of his resignation.
Oh, okay.
Public participation, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak now, we would like to have you come forward. All right, thank you. Moving on to number, item number three, resolution of confidence from Director Mark Solik. Would you like to talk to us about that?
Sure. Yeah, I do. This is in response to a member of the public who spoke on our last meeting, the last board meeting on May 18th. And I believe that that public member had misinformation and spoke falsehoods. And I would just, I put this together because I want to set the record straight, that we have supreme confidence in the interim district manager, and that's Kevin Phillips. So that's why I put together this resolution.
I don't suppose there's anything that says that I have to read it, can, because it's Mark's point that he's putting forward. May he read it to us for the public record? Doesn't have to be the president, does it? Never mind, I'll read it.
You don't have to read it.
You don't have to read it? I just thought it might be nice for the public to know, because they won't, they won't see.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Want me to read it? You read it. Go ahead, no, go ahead, Mark.
I'm not a real good reader, actually.
Oh, come on, you're great.
I'll give it a shot.
You're terrific.
Okay, let me, let me get to the right page here. Okay, this is resolution number 2018-06.
Seven.
Seven.
Oh. I had six on my copy.
Mine says seven.
Mine says seven.
I have six.
Same here. You all voted more.
There's two resolutions, remember.
See, I already messed up.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I was looking at the wrong resolution. My bad.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right.
So what is it?
You are right. We have two of them.
You're right. Okay. All right. Forgive me, Mark. Two side by side. Okay. And this, this resolution is a resolution of confidence by the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District. Whereas the Paradise Irrigation District was without a district manager in spring 2017, and whereas Kevin Phillips, a district employee since March 26, 2007, was highly capable and willing to serve, and whereas on April 24, 2017, the district board voted to appoint Kevin Phillips as interim district manager, and whereas Kevin Phillips has continued to perform in this position in a professional and trustworthy manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District expresses its continued confidence in Kevin Phillips for his integrity and service to the district and the public during his term as interim district manager and as a district employee.
That's it? Thank you.
I move we approve resolution 2018-06.
And could we have discussion?
Yes, but we can have motion and second and then discussion.
Okay. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just want to piggyback on this resolution that I've never met Kevin before I started on this board, but in all my interactions with him, I've known him to be a person of good character, professional, honest, and I just want that, to say that for the record.
You're here. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please. Georgiana.
Director Kelleher?
Aye.
Director Rice?
Aye.
Director Kelleher?
Yes.
President Nuttler?
And aye.
Thank you, board.
You're certainly welcome, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, 3B, Director vacancy, Division 5 provide direction for filling the vacant seat on the Board of Directors of Paradise Irrigation District. Talk to us, please, Kevin or Emily, whichever.
So, I'll let Emily take this one, if you don't mind.
Don't mind. So you received, the district received a letter of resignation for Director Jacobson on May 17, and with that vacancy comes some obligations for the district. The kind of short summary of those obligations, the district must notify the county elections official within 15 days of the date of the vacancy, which I believe is June 1st, that there is in fact a vacancy. And the district can either appoint, the board can either appoint someone to fill the vacancy or call for an election. If you choose to go forward with an appointment, you would need to post the notice of the vacancy. I think in the past, you have established some type of, almost like an interview type, type practice that you could employ again to seek qualified candidates for the vacant position, and then you would appoint someone within 60 days. If you fail to do that, it goes to the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors can either appoint someone to the position, and if they don't, then it defaults to that election. The timing of the vacancy, it happened in the first half of Director Jacobson's term, which means whomever you appoint will serve until November of this year, when that seat will go up for election, and the election will be to complete that term. So they would serve from 2018 to 2020, at which time that seat comes up again, and you would be filled via election again. So at this point, I think what were the Board's direction as to whether you want to fill via appointment or call for an election?
Does calling for an election mean that person's name will be placed on the ballot along with the regular, it's not like a special election that we had to pay for?
Well, we would need to talk, yeah, that's a good question.
Well, see, it would be deemed a special election, and unfortunately it would cost a lot of money. It'd be a weird time, kind of like.
That's my assumption. Have I not talked to the county elections office?
Well, it, I can promise, well, yes, I can promise you it would, because it's too late to hit June, obviously.
You're asking about June.
And it's too, it, see, this will automatically happen in November, as she just said. So whoever's position we request to fill it would be a temporary position until it's filled at the November election. So it'd only be for five, six months.
What I'm saying, what I, my question was, if we let it go to the November election, will that be, will that cost us any money?
It's going to go to the November election, automatically, isn't it, from what I hear?
Are you talking about?
Additional, additional money? Is that what you're asking about? Additional money than, than the actual election?
Yeah. You're asking if you leave the seat vacant until November, can it all be covered with that election? That's a timing issue. I don't know. The Board of Supervisors theoretically should act before that, and they should appoint someone. I don't know, I can't promise that they will, but they should.
Well, you said that we had, you said one of our options was to, was to call an election.
Yeah.
Can't we call an election for November?
That's a question for the elections office, but I'm not served it out. I, my instinct is no, that they will force a special election if you call for an election. But if you don't and make the, if you don't and make the appointment, then it will, the appointee will serve until November.
See, if we just appoint somebody, now they'll sit there until November. The election in November is going to happen automatically. And so it's hard to manage to fill it, so we don't have just four. Excuse me, Bill.
I've been through this, I think twice, if I know of one for sure. And the election was a minimum of 20 some thousand dollars, but if it's in between, that was with the matching up against other elections. If it was by itself, you're paying for the whole nine yards. And so I don't know where it would be, but it'd be in excess of 20,000. My feeling is just, if we can find a viable candidate, is that we, the board appoint them, but they know coming in that they're going to have to run for election in November. And the board, of course, going through that, you, you hope you have at least two candidates. And this is how I got on the board, actually, years ago, was a lady moved out of town and was on the board, and there was four candidates, and I ended up with the job. So that was a long time from now, but that same policy follows.
And so if we appoint someone, they'll only serve until November?
Well, they can serve longer. But if they serve until November, they will.
They'll have to stand for election.
Right.
100% sure if we appoint someone, they have to stand for election in November?
If they wish to.
If they, no, no, only if they wish.
If they wish to continue.
Yeah, you may find someone who says, look, I'll, you know, I'll sit here until November, but you better find another candidate come November. That's entirely possible.
Okay.
But the individual that you appoint will only be appointed through November. Whether he or she continues will be whether they're elected.
Yeah. If they choose to run, yeah.
Okay. And if we don't appoint someone, the county supervisors could appoint someone for us, but they'll even only, they have to stand for election until November?
Correct.
Yeah. So it'd be the same thing. So I kind of think that we would be the most responsible to just, as soon as we can. I think that the June 1, especially since we've pulled it forward, it's not much time. Should we try to shoot for the regular meeting in July, which we're still under, I think the 60 days, aren't we? Yes, we are. May, June, July, yes. It'd be approximately right there, but.
Be close.
The Board of Supervisors is not going to want to kick in a special meeting when we're three days short or long or whatever.
We can.
But you don't, you don't want to jeopardize the validity of anything that the appointee votes on.
Correct.
We, yeah, we can.
We can have a special.
Put out the notice of candidates and then have a special meeting just to.
And we could do that.
Just to pick that.
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Could do that towards the end of, end of June or something.
Yeah, yeah, so we have plenty of time.
Again, the experience with these lasts about an hour, because if you have three candidates, of course, you have to interview them. The board fills another room and votes, and if it's clear, it's all right, but if they don't, you know, it isn't an even majority. If we tie or something, then we've got to work it out. That's the only problem I see.
So I got a question. Aren't our two seats coming up for election?
Yeah, uh-huh.
So we're going to have four seats in November. Four seats.
That's what I was wondering.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Oh, yours as well?
No.
No, Bill.
Oh, Bill, Bill, okay, I'm sorry.
Because, see, it was Bill, you and Ann in the fall.
Okay. But my question is, do we know, does the office of, the elections office charge for each additional, it's a party that's going, you know, each additional? It's pretty small, comparable to the.
Okay.
They charge you, if you got one, you get, you get a bulk of it, and then the additionals aren't too much. Okay. So we just lump it all together, that'd be the clean way to do it.
Right. Because they're printing the same number of everything. Special elections are very expensive.
Right.
If you just run at the normal times, it's substantially cheaper.
Okay. Thank you.
So what should we do? Should we go ahead and figure on advertising soon and have some figure that we are going to have some kind of meeting the latter part of June, something like that?
And what's the protocol if we want to appoint someone? Do we like post it for 30 days?
That's what we have to do.
15.
Post it for 15 days?
Yeah.
I'm sure the press would cooperate with us and.
We could issue a press release. Yeah.
It has to be advertised in the local newspaper.
And then we'd request letters of interest and, yeah, the board, you know, what else can we print up and have you?
Put it out on Facebook, and in 10 minutes, everybody in town will know about it.
Well, they have to live in district time, so.
Yes, correct.
And is it at this, is it fair to ask for a resume or just a letter of interest?
We need the boundaries, the boundaries of the district.
Would have to be.
That has to be part of.
They would have to be posted and all that, yeah.
They have to be, they have to be a resident of Division 5, and you can set it up where you have a resume, you request a resume or some kind of preliminary criteria, application type process. It's pretty informal, whatever information you think you need to assess whether they would be a qualified candidate.
They let us all on, so it must be pretty low, pretty low bar.
Better eventually.
Yeah, the, the minimum qualifications are just that they have to be citizen, voting age and live in district.
First party.
And live in District 5, right? So those should be included.
I think we're looking for voter as well.
Registered.
Register voter.
And you mentioned all those items in your information.
And the strange thing is, they can be a tenant, is what I've been told since then, that.
Yeah, as long as they live there.
Yeah. Wants to live in the district.
They don't have to be a property owner.
Then if the landlord pays the water bill.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep.
So if the board wants to go forward with the appointment, probably the simplest thing to do is to just provide direction to the district secretary to work with legal counsel, to post the vacancy and seek letters of interest for appointees.
Okay.
Well, let's look at, let's look at a calendar and see, because we would have had our meeting on the 20th, now it's 12th, is that what it is? Yeah. Should we shoot for something like the 21st, 27th, 28th of next month of June to have a special meeting? And so we ought to have all of this information get out and back to us by, say, the 15th, something like that, and have, have that be the deadline on people's return applications is the 15th of June? And then we can at some subsequent time, maybe at the next June 12 meeting, decide a date for our meeting, that we have a special meeting?
You're saying?
Have the applicants have all their information in by the 15th? This is what I'm just saying, I'm just talking, so y'all can talk to me about it.
Right, right.
But that would give them almost, three and a half weeks.
And then have a special meeting the week of the 18th?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Or even, even on the 15th, if you want it.
That's true. Friday, not always a good day, but yeah, somewhere in that week, but we can.
Well, we'd have to get the information ready for the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so have it, have a meeting.
Special meeting, oh, oh.
We did it on the same day.
What about if we have the special meeting on the day we would have had a meeting anyway, because all of us should have had that time free, because we were planning on having a meeting on the, on the 20th at 6:30?
The reason you did that is because you were absent, yeah.
If you don't need.
Yeah.
On the 18th.
Oh, you know what? I think we would like you here.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, forgot about that.
Well, what is, what is the 20th?
Oh, never mind, never mind the 20th.
I'll be here.
21st, 27th, 28th?
When do you come back?
I come back on the 20, hold on, 21st.
On the 21st?
Well, let's pick the next week.
Actually be back at work.
Tuesday, Wednesday, the following week?
Oh.
Okay.
You'll be back at work on the 22nd.
On the 22nd, so that, how about the Monday, the 25th?
Yeah, 25, 6, 7 works for me anywhere there.
You know, one of those works for me.
Can we have it in the evening?
Yes, let's have it at definitely evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
So first we need to give direction.
Okay. Looks good to me, too.
Do we need to make motion for direction?
Let's talk about it first and see what you want for a motion. How does that sound to have, you get all the information out, have the applicants have their information back to us by Friday the 15th? And then we will at probably the evening of the 12th.
No, not the 12th.
No, the evening of the 12th, when we have our board meeting, designate which, which evening, but we'll go the 26th, 27th, somewhere in there, 5, 6, 7.
Especially 26th or 27th.
It's somewhere in there, but can we?
PM.
Can we decide, put that on the agenda on the 12th?
Yeah, we don't need to actually, you can call a special.
You can call a special, you don't have to put it on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. You can do it right now.
You can decide then.
Do you want to, you want to decide right now? Everybody got their calendars?
Yeah.
Can we decide now?
Yeah, fine.
How about Tuesday night, the 26th?
Okay.
Sure.
Is that all right?
Yep.
6:30?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay, special meeting.
How soon can we get the notice out for the?
Should get it out pretty fast.
Yeah, 15.
Well, yeah, I don't know, but I mean, how soon can we get it out and start that 15-day period?
I don't think it's easy, but you do have the press release and the, just make sure I can.
Oh, okay, right, so.
Okay.
Like.
Okay.
What's today, Wednesday?
Do you need a motion to that?
I mean, I can shoot it through.
Do you need a motion to that, Georgiana, or just concurrents work?
A motion.
Okay.
Oh, okay, like to make a motion.
It looks better if the president doesn't make a bunch of motions.
Okay, so this is to set, what is this motion for?
To actually move forward with the fill of vacancies.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a motion to move forward, to send out the notice to fill the vacant board.
By appointment.
Seat, by appointment, and that's Division 5.
With a deadline date for receiving of applications, the 15th, Friday the 15th of June, and then the special meeting to make the decision by the board be the Tuesday night, the 26th.
Could we refer to, do we have a map on our webpage that shows the divisions?
I'm sure.
We do.
You will have that.
Just a reference to that, where people know that they're eligible and not.
So I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, 4 to 0. Okay. 3C, designation to Richard O'Donnell and Coffin Associates and PID Legal Counsel, Representative Emily Moe as district labor negotiator regarding unrepresented position of district manager.
This is just the next step, as you guys move forward in your selection of a district manager, to have a closed session discussion about the negotiation of any employment contract with any individual, you need to first take action to designate your labor negotiators. So Richard is on there because he has been very closely involved, and I'm on there because of geography, so that I can bridge the gap between your conversations with Richard and make sure that we stay Brown Act compliant and.
Emily, could you, I heard everything, but could you speak into the mic for me, please?
Yeah, your mic is clear out there.
Sorry.
Okay. Are you able?
Emily says I need hearing aids, and I stubbornly say.
Mickey, can you always let us know, is there some way you know whether or not we're being vocal enough that we can be heard? There's not like a sound meter on that or anything?
I can tell you after.
Okay. We'll try to be more faithful about using our mics.
I think we need a lot of the questions, to make sure that everyone can be heard. Generally, the problem that we have are the people that are doing, like are doing right now, is seeking from your seat, or if the board number leans back too far.
Yeah. It just doesn't pick it up, okay.
Thank you, but we'll make sure that we pay attention.
And that's why we try to get the public up to the lectern, because there's a mic in front of them, hopefully they speak well enough to hear.
So nobody may have heard you.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Just briefly, sure.
Sure. So this is the next step, before you begin negotiations with any potential candidates for the position of district manager, you need to designate your labor negotiators so that you can have closed session discussions on the matter. Richard O'Donnell is on there because he works for Coffin Associates and has been your representative thus far. I'm on there as well to ensure compliance with the Brown Act and to kind of bridge the geography gap, since Richard doesn't live in the area.
So we just need a motion approving you to, okay.
Both of us, please.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to designate Richard O'Donnell with Coffin Associates and PID Legal Counsel, Emily Lamo as district labor negotiators regarding unrepresented position of district manager.
I'll second.
Okay, you can have it. Mark seconded it.
I'll second that, sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. By the way, if anybody from the public wishes to speak, well, just show yourself. D, June 2018 regular board meeting, adopt resolution number 2018-07, setting the June 2018 regular meeting of the Board of Directors. And this is the other resolution. Somebody want to explain it, or should we just read it, and that'll be good enough explanation for the public?
I don't, I don't mind giving you a brief explanation. At your last meeting, you took action to cancel the regular June board meeting and instead established a special board meeting on June 12th, in anticipation of the fact that you may want to take action on a district manager contract. We wanted, in an abundance of caution, to establish a regular board meeting, because such action can only be taken at a regular board meeting. There are publication requirements associated with this. Your other option would be to not adopt this resolution, stay with your special on June 12th, and then take any action at the July regular board meeting. So it's, it's up to you, but we wanted to be prepared for the conversation.
Sounds good. We need to be proceeding, not prolonging. Let me read the resolution for the benefit of people on airwaves. Resolution, setting the June 2018 regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Paradise Irrigation District. Whereas the regular board meeting of the Board of Directors of Paradise Irrigation District are currently conducted on the third Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM, and whereas the Board of Directors wishes to revise its regular meeting schedule for June 2018, such that the board meeting, the regular board meeting of the Board of Directors for June 2018 will be conducted on Tuesday, June 12. And I might put in a paragraph here that says the reason is because the manager will be absent, he will be out of town. At 6:30 PM, in the Paradise Irrigation District Board Room, 6332 Clark Road, Paradise, California. And whereas the Government Code, Section 54954, states that the Board of Directors shall provide by ordinance, resolution bylaws, or by whatever other rule is required for the conduct of business by the Board of Directors, and the time and place for holding regular meetings, and whereas California Water Code, Section 21378, provides that the board may change its regular meeting date by resolution, provided that the resolution is published once a week for two successive weeks, and a newspaper published in Butte County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District that the regular board meeting in June 2018 shall be held on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 6:30 PM, in the Paradise Irrigation District Board Room at 6332 Clark Road, Paradise. Be it therefore resolved that the District Secretary is directed to publish this resolution as required by law. Oh, I also probably ought to throw this in there, too, and that is, except as set forth above, regular meeting dates of the district shall remain unchanged. I move we approve as read.
Is it roll call necessary?
It has to be, yeah, because it's a resolution.
So now, are we wanting to add additional language? You mentioned something about adding additional language in the resolution.
Oh, I just said in parentheses, the reason for this is because, yeah, yeah, yeah. In case people might want to know, and I don't hear a second yet.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Director Solik?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Kelleher?
Yes.
President Nuttler?
Yep, aye, yes. Okay, 3D, June 2018 board meeting. Did I just do that?
Yeah, so we're going to go into closed session.
Excuse me, thought that sounded familiar, just the first few words. Okay, item number four is closed session. We go into closed session to discuss items A and B.
Want to talk? No? Okay.
And the time is 2:27. And the time is 2:27.